All right, at 6:30, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village School Board of Education to order. Roll call please.
Oh, sorry. Carrier here. Hayden.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Mazer, Asson. And then Wonderley.
Here.
Stephanie didn't call me. She's on her way. The birds are bad in the way. So, we'd like to welcome all of you. It's great to see some faces out there. Our regulars, I'm always glad to see you too, but it's nice to have visitors, thank you. We're thankful for your interest in our community and our support of our schools. Thanks. Please stand and say the flag with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a presentation by Carrie Gerhardt from the Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center.
Thank you for having me. I have a folder for each of you. A couple extra everybody needs. So, it is projected up there, and I know Mr. Slattery agreed to be my controller, but there is a copy of everything in your folder. But first of all, I wanted to thank you for inviting me here as superintendent of the EFC. I wanted to bring my sidekick, I think many of you know Homer Hendricks. He had a basketball game tonight. He's doing some coaching for one of the local districts that he's not being here, but he wanted me to extend his well wishes. I know he so enjoyed working with the Hicksville Board when he was here in the district. So, what I'm wanting to share with you all tonight is just to give you a little bit of an idea about educational service centers. We often find out that people just maybe don't quite know what all EFCs do. So, I'm here just to share that information and answer any questions that you might have. So, to start out, if you want to advance this slide. So, in EFC, we actually are in both federal and state law. In the state law, we're considered a school district, although we're not like your local school district. We don't have a community. We don't have the same setup, but we do have to follow a lot of the same rules and regulations. And then, under federal law, again, we're considered local education agencies. So, again, the same kinds of things. We have to follow a lot of the rules related to employment and contracts and how we operate, yet we're a little bit different. We do have a governing board, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. So, why are there EFCs? We really are part of the state system to help provide services in a manner that might help districts save dollars and be an efficient operation by shared services. That's really what the crux of our model is. Sharing services, employing people that might cross boundaries, bringing schools together to do some networking and training on a larger scale. So, that's why we're part of the system that Ohio has. So, from the Department of Education on down to the state support teams, then it filters out to the educational service centers, and then directly where you're sitting with your school district. So, every school district in Ohio that has more than 16,000 students in their K through 12 enrollment, which is really most of them, some of the urban's are larger than the 16,000. But every district that has 16,000 or less is required in law to align to an EFC, and that means that they pick an EFC, it's typically in their geographical region, who helps provide those core services that that district needs. And so, we get the privilege of working with Hicksville. And right now, every single district in Ohio, except for Tito Public, has chosen to align with the EFC. So, even some of the larger ones like Columbus Public, Cincinnati, all of those have chosen to align. So, there is great value in the EFC system. Districts can purchase services from EFCs, and we'll talk a little bit more specifically about what Hicksville likes to purchase from the EFC. And we would not exist, I tell, I always tell this at superintendent meetings, we would not exist if it weren't for our member districts. So, we have great member districts that we work with here in Northwest Ohio. So, our mission and vision is to provide quality services and build valued partnerships with our member districts. So, that's our core mission and vision. When we bring new people onboard at the EFC, that we expect them to embrace our mission and vision and to help us achieve those goals. So, we do that through specialized services, innovative programs, being responsive to the district's needs, and collaborating with our districts. A little bit more about us. In our Northwest Ohio EFC footprint, there are 23 school districts, and it's all the local districts, city, and exempted village districts within Difansville and Henry Williams County. So, it's, all of those schools are part of the EFC. We also work closely with Ford County Career Center as our vocational school. We trickle a little bit into Penta Career Center because Swanton, they have aligned with Penta for their vocational services. But our footprint is very solid here in the northwest corner. If you looked at the number of K through 12 students in our service area, it's about 25,000. The preschool is another population, and it's hard to really get a good count of how many preschoolers there are, because preschool is not a mandated service for all three and four-year-olds. We'll talk a little bit later about how we do focus on the preschoolers with disabilities and how we provide services that are mandated. We do have roughly 360 people employed at our EFC. And like I said, we, it's kind of unique because we want our people to feel that they're part of the EFC, yet they've got to, they're spread out and working across the region. Some of them travel to three or four districts, some even more because of that shared service model. So, they're traveling, but then some of our staff are exclusively housed in the local districts, and we really appreciate when the districts make them feel like they're part of the school staff and part of the school community. So, we see that here at Hicksville with some of our multiple disability programming and our preschool programming. Besides special education, we do a lot of work in curriculum, professional development. We help the districts with their truancy and attendance through a partnership with the Defiance County Juvenile Court System. We help our districts compile substitute lists, so when they have staff that are out, that they can find qualified substitutes, whether that be teachers or aides. We do background checks at our office. I should have mentioned, our main office is in Archibald, and we have a beautiful facility that was built about nine years ago. And we, if you haven't been in our facility, it's a great place for trainings and meetings and student events. Yep.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
We're taking notes over here.
Oh, you're, oh, I bet you are. A little bit more about the EFCs across the state. We're over 100 years old in law. So, back when they were first created, back in 1914, there was one in every county, so there were 88 of us, and we used to be at county offices. And I remember when I first became employed by the county office, I was in Williams County, and we were at the courthouse there. And then, back in 1997, the Williams Fulton County and Defiance decided to merge because there were some incentives to merge. And so, in our area, that was done. And for a while, even though we were merged in name, we were Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center. We still maintain the four-site offices. And I had the privilege of working at the courthouse annexed in Defiance as a special ed supervisor, and got to work in Hicksville district back in the late 90s and early 2000s. But it's evolved from being more regulatory to more of a service, a service organization. Where we used to, the county offices had to give the stamp of approval on a lot of the things that the locals did. That's no longer the case. People ask, "Are you in charge of all those superintendents?" And I say, "No way, I am not in charge of the superintendents." We help connect and facilitate services. So, just a little visual. Right now, there are 52 EFCs across Ohio, and you can see we're represented there in the upper corner. Some of the other EFCs across the state have merged. There are still seven, or I'm sorry, still 35 that have remained single-county EFCs. And so, every year, that changes a little bit. We found that it worked very well here in our area to have the merger. It's allowed us to do some great things that we weren't able to do before. So, a couple things we are required to do in law. One of the newer things, and it can change based on legislation that's passed by the Ohio Legislature or the State Board of Education. But currently, we are, we can serve as the Business Advisory Council on behalf of our member districts that choose to go that route. And that's been a newer thing, and it's allowed us to look at the business advisory connections on a regional basis. And so, right now, 22 of our 23 districts are part of a larger Business Advisory Council that we're just getting off the ground this year. We also do a lot of things with special ed and ODE initiatives and rules and requirements. We help provide a lot of the training. Also, if we have schools that are in what's called continuous improvement, so let's say that they're struggling academically, then there are provisions in law where an EFC will come in and work with that district. We're blessed here where we, all of our districts are high-performing across the area, so we have not had to delve into the continuous improvement, the very regimented cross-staffs at this point. So, just briefly, districts are allowed to contract with us for a multitude of services. And in your packet, I'll just point out, there is a nice little brochure that has a listing of all the programs and services that are available to our districts. A lot of the things we do, we do for no fee. Many of our trainings and our networking meetings, we very rarely will charge districts. But if it's a student-based service, and many times this comes into play with our special education programs, districts will elect to contract with us to help them provide that service. And so, in here, again, is the listing of services that are available to our districts, and they can choose what they want or need, and that can change throughout a given year. And I'll go, I've got a couple slides that are more specific to Hicksville, a little bit later on. Across the state, we employ over 16,000 people. There's a lot of dollars that flow through EFCs. And again, the main purpose is to help a district maximize their resources through the shared service model. We, as EFCs, the last four years, we've had to undergo an exercise where we help demonstrate how much cost savings can one gain by working with an EFC. So, there's a little sample, again, in your handout. Our most recent exercise of showing our cost savings is the high-performing EFC. Each EFC across the state can pick and choose up to five services and work through an exercise that demonstrates just how much cost savings can be realized through the shared service model. So, we picked last year to look at administrative searches. Oftentimes, we'll get contacted by a district to help them with a superintendent or treasurer search. We do those. We picked speech therapy. That's one of our larger lines of service, because there are many students from preschool all the way up through high school that require speech therapy to be able to access their education properly. We also picked Northwest Ohio Opportunity School. We have a school for students who are at risk of dropping out. They may be very credit deficient. And so, we have some online programming that's monitored and oversaw by a teacher, and that's located at our Defiance campus, the Independence Education Center. We have gifted supervision services and school psychology. So, those were the services that we picked. And overall, through that exercise, we were able to demonstrate roughly a 25% savings to districts through that consortium model. Biggies for us, preschool through age 22 special ed, that's a huge part of what we do. My background's in special ed. Where my, when I first was employed as a teacher, I taught for the county office and worked with kids with emotional disabilities. We operate a school. It was a, one of the Tenora District Schools, elementary schools. And when they built their new facility, the EFC purchased the building at a low cost. And we run, it's called Independence Education Center. So, students with severe emotional disabilities may attend there. We try to help them build their social-emotional skills so that they can learn those things. And the goal is to transition them back to their home districts ultimately. So, that's a big service in our area. We also operate out of Archibald, programming for preschool through 12th grade for hearing impairments. And these would be students that, they need the level of support of learning sign language and having hearing interpreters. So, they go to the special program at Archibald to receive those services. We also have hearing impaired students that are able to stay in their home districts with the proper support. So, the big buzzwords in special ed are always least restricted environment. Where can that student be successful? The less intrusive setting to keep them as much as possible with their same-age peers in their home district. But there are some instances where that's not possible. We do a lot of professional development, I think I mentioned that. We try to do professional development for our administrators, as well as teachers and peer professionals. And our office in Archibald is used all the time for different events like that. Funding, where do we get funding? Well, we get a little bit of federal funding through some grants, and those are typically for special purpose things, such as after-school programming or save schools, help these students. So, those are very targeted funds. We get a little bit of dollars from the state, and they base those dollars on the number of students in our service area. And then, we also get local funding from our school districts, and those dollars are used to support our core services, as well as what they use to purchase those extra services from us based on their needs. And how are we held accountable? We have to go through a lot of the same audit processes that a school district has to. Districts get to choose what EFC they align to. So, when we bring people onboard, or I tell my staff, you know, districts have a choice, and we have to be that rock star level for districts to want to stay with our services. So, that's something that we really strive to accomplish and make sure that we're serving our districts in the way that they need us. We do have to post our services and costs online. We go through audits. We have an elected governing board. There's nine people on my board, two from each county. And then Fulton County, when we merged, was the largest in population, so they have the third member, so that makes up our nine. We have performance audits on EFCs. Step up to quality, I'll mention that. That's a preschool function where all of the preschools that Northwest Ohio EFC helps to, helps our districts to operate, are ranked by a licensing system. And I'm proud to say, we have the highest ranking with all of our preschools at five stars, so that's a great thing to have. And then, a couple, the last couple of slides show the services that we have specifically at this point in time with Hicksville. And I'll just, again, share the training PD for teachers, administrators. We do a large training every year where over 700 busted van drivers come to get their required four hours of training. We do a lot of networking opportunities, so we have groups in that will meet and share information and resources with one another. So, that's been very beneficial. How the events, I don't know if any of you are familiar. We do spelling bees and quiz bowls and math accounts and events like that where we're directly bringing students together for those special things. Educational consultant services for curriculum and gifted, that's really important. It's important for a district, and I will say Hicksville is top-notch with the level of service that they, everything that they have going on, from all your initiatives with Ron Clark and just being cutting-edge. But keeping up on those requirements from ODE is really important. It takes a lot of people, so we try to help support our districts in those efforts. And we talked a little bit about the opportunity school. Part of that, we also have a suspension center. So, instead of kids being suspended to sit at home, we can, districts can have them come to our central location near Defiance, and they're monitored, and there are staff there that help them work on their schoolwork so that they're engaged and they're not falling farther behind just by having a suspension. Special ed, I will point out, Hicksville has hosted a multiple disabilities classroom here in the district for several years now. It's at the elementary level. So, these are students with cognitive disabilities that have a adaptive curriculum that they're working on. And so, we appreciate you allowing us to have space here for that. Independence Education Center, talked a little bit about, for the students with emotional disabilities, the hearing impairment at Archibald. And we also have three different classrooms located at Ford County Career Center for students that have special needs as well. A couple of our programs, we really get the kids out working in the communities, whether it be McDonald's or Satter Village. And these are more of our cognitively delayed students, but we want to get them engaged in community work opportunities to help them when they graduate. And then, other supports we do for Hicksville, occupational, physical therapy, speech, adaptive phys ed, vision specialists, in case there are any students that have visual disabilities, paraprofessionals. There are sometimes students that require an extra person to help them access their education. So, some of those paraprofessional services are provided. It can be a combination. I know sometimes those are done locally. So, we've been, had a really flexible relationship with Hicksville on that. And then, preschool. Back when I first started in special ed, it was not a requirement of schools to serve the preschoolers. That was always done at the county Board of ADD level. And then, over time, that changed. And back in the early 90s is when it became the obligation that starting at age three for a child with a disability, it's the responsibility of the local school district to make sure that that child gets in programming. So, that's expanded over time. And the programs for our preschoolers with disabilities, it's great that we can include some typical peer models from the community right into those classrooms, and it's just a great thing to see going on. So, that's probably more than you wanted to know about EFCs. But it's my passion, my whole career, except for there were maybe three years of my 30 that I was at a local district, but all the rest I was with at EFC. So, I love the work that we do, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is it any different because we are in exempted village?
It's not anymore. It used to be a little bit different with how the funding from the state flowed, but that all changed back probably 10 years ago. So, now, our client districts are, the flow of the funding, it's the same for local exempted village and city schools.
I want to pull Jeff Slattery real quick and just interject. All right. I know. I told him last, I had to reject it last night, it's his turn.
No, just a couple, I want to kind of explain a couple ways that they maybe save us money or give us additional opportunities. For example, if we have maybe a special ed population and we don't know how long they're going to be here for, sometimes we'll hire that person, that aide through the EFC. And if that student leaves, had we hired them, we would be on the hook for that person for the entire year, and we'd have to find a placement for that individual. When they're hired through the EFC, that student leaves, that aide goes either with that student or back to the EFC, and we're not on the hook for that for the entire school year. And that happens maybe more often than you guys realize, where kids are in and out, and we have to have somebody there for that kid. But if we hire them, they're here the whole time. When they were there through the EFC, it actually helps us by getting us off the hook if that child leaves. The idea of a gifted curriculum or a gifted consultant or a curriculum consultant, us purchasing one or having our own house here is expensive. But us having one that's here a couple days a week allows us to make sure that we're meeting all the criteria that we didn't meet without paying for the full-time services of somebody. And they are our first phone call. We can't, there's so many changes with the state. They're our first phone call anytime that we have questions. Are we, are we being compliant? Are we doing the right thing? And they're able to answer those questions and get those things back to us. It's incredibly helpful there. And then, the IEC, and I know we've talked about the IEC a little bit. We have a number of kids there. We can't meet those students' needs here. We don't have the space, and we don't have the teachers in order to meet those needs. We have to meet those needs, that's a requirement. And instead of hiring a teacher, there's so many restrictions on the age levels that are allowed to be together, the cognitive levels that are allowed to be together. Instead of us hiring individual teachers, and then most of those students have, many of those students have individual one-on-one aides, that gets cost, gets built out to multiple districts. We're not paying for an entire teacher, for an entire aide that gets distributed amongst the different districts. So, even though it's a big cost to us, that cost isn't what it would be had we invested here potentially. So, I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood. Again, some of the ways that actually saves us money the longer it happens with the EFC.
I appreciate you interjecting. And I would say that the IEC, we had roughly an enrollment of 75 students. So, that's all 23 districts. So, it's typically, you know, we get a lot of transient kids anymore. It didn't used to be that way, and now it's like that across Northwest Ohio. But, so it's the kids that truly need that level of service. And you know, if they're not in the right placement, they can be very disruptive to the rest of the student population.
And we have the Opportunity Center to add on to that. It's a building right next to the Independent Education Center, which is a behavioral school. We've been utilizing that more and more each year I've been here because, again, she hit the nail on the head, you talk about the transient student population. We're getting kids in that are credit efficient. We're getting kids in that aren't for the Behavior Center, but we have got to get them on the path to graduate. And so, it's cheaper for us to send those kids out there for a short period of time to get their credits caught up and then return back to our school. Because again, like he said, if we're purchasing, if we're paying someone to sit in a classroom, maybe like a suspension center or a credit recovery person, by the time you throw in salary, benefits, and programming, it's $70,000, $80,000 a year in cost to our district. Where I'm sending kids out there to get their credit recovery back, number one, and I hate to say it, but it's true, they don't like going out there. Okay? They're being separated from their peers. And when they get out there, usually, you know, they put the rubber to the road, they get caught up, they come back, and I'm like, hey, listen, you need to pass later classes. You're in high school. We don't have time to be messing around. And if you fail all your classes again this semester, you're going to go back out there and do credit recovery again. And instead of, again, an $80,000 bill a year, we're looking at more like $15,000. like fifteen thousand dollars a year or maybe twenty at the most hopefully. But again, it saves us a ton of money and, and again, it's a deterrent, I mean, uh, most kids who go out there that are, that are from Hicksville don't want to go back and typically do a pretty good job not going back.
I just have a question, I don't know if it's for you Keith, or for you administrators, but how many of the teachers here are taking advantage of the, um, gifted training that the EFC is offering for teachers?
I, Mr. Clark is offering, um, some more gifted PD this year, trying to give more of our, our teachers our credential. I would say off the top of my head, probably eighty, eighty-five percent of our staff is doing a, an online book study this year called Bold School and, and we're utilizing that to get our credits for, to be able to teach gifted in our classrooms, so.
Yeah, so we're organizing that book study, it's been a great thing, so it's, um, it's kind of a combination of some face-to-face and the online and that's been a nice tool to help teachers get those thirty hours.
Do we use you at all for the English as a second language, I see that we're getting more and more?
You know, a little bit, we, um, right now, um, districts get a little bit of, of, uh, federal funding and state funding based on counts from maybe it's in the readers maybe three or four years and what we're starting to see is more and more students that have that need, so, um, we are in the process of trying to gather what are the challenges ahead of us, we do have one of our consultants that, her, uh, main responsibility is to be a resource person, um, for our districts if they have questions, but right now we don't employ teachers for EFL in many of the, maybe only in the larger districts in Napoleon and Waseon we do, but it hasn't been in need in the smaller districts, but it could be something that's coming because that's definitely a challenge.
We've, we're seeing a large, uh, increased population of students that are needing that service, so.
Yes, there's some creative ways of instructional aides that have, um, some experience with, depending on what your language, um, needs are, we've had some success with getting some, um, some aides in to help do some tutoring and support for the regular achievement, sure that that's, I've seen that make a difference, but it's so challenging because in a rural district, there's not targeted resources. One thing I forgot to mention, I was born in Hicksville and proud of it, me and my four sisters and two brothers, because my Aunt Sue worked at the Hicksville Hospital and I was going to start out with that, but I'm going to share that. Not everybody can say they were born in Hicksville, but I'm glad.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Very appreciative, we appreciate it.
Great, let me know if you ever have any questions.
We will, you drive safely.
Thank you.
Okay, Director of Operations, Eric.
Yes.
Are you awake?
I am.
Have you found snow all night?
Been a long day.
Thank you.
Yeah. Been, been busy, uh, January snow season, been a lot of plow, a lot of sowing, uh, some last night too, of course, and more, uh, scheduled for tonight, so we'll see what we get. Currently, uh, I said last time I was here that all the reflexes have been fixed, we have some reflexes pop back up, just to let you guys know. Uh, I've contacted the company, it's all under warranty, but they're waiting until it's safe to go on the road before they come back to try to repair them, so, just waiting for that, uh, also, uh, kind of hard to believe, but spring will be here before you know it, all the mowers have been to our, um, third party that, I guess, our other party that does all the servicing, view recovery equipment and, um, we did, we participate in a program called the downtime guarantee program, in case one of ours breaks down, they'll give us a loaner, uh, right on the spot, equivalent, it's actually newer than ours, that we can just, we can have it until it can get ours fixed, so, uh, we've just got to participate in that, got the mowers back ready and, as spring's forward, sir, will be here before you know it, we'll be turning all the water on down on the park, throw a baseball, softball and track will be here and, uh, also the last one was, oh, solar ray, I know I've been asked before where we have the solar ray, just giving you an update, uh, we are still moving forward, the solar rays should take a lot longer than expected, they're, right now the anticipated start date for the solar field is, uh, May first. The company, the guy that came here from Energy Optimizers that did the presentation, they're still the ones on board, they hired a company that actually has all the panels and will bring them in, set it all up, well, when, uh, May twenty eighteen, when, uh, Trump imposed the steel tariffs, they found out that they were, weren't going to be able to make money off our project from what we locked in the cost per kilowatt and so they looked for another party, looked for another party, finally found a bigger party that is doing a lot of projects, was able to get pricing down on material because of doing a lot of many projects, that they're able to, to do the project and we start, uh, not negotiations, meetings with them and, and learn a little bit more about them and we're starting to get all the interconnections done with AEP and so finally moving in the right direction again, so, still proud of having that up and running.
I like your attitude this morning, it's on.
I hope it. The no, snow in December and then January, God, I got us.
You're not the athletic person that you just mentioned, so I had a question, someone asked me about why we do the portable bodies at the track instead of using the village building?
Well, first off, the village building's not ours and they, they were nice and let us borrow it for a few years, I mean during track season, the problem was they redid all their floors with epoxy and everything and the track kids don't follow the rules, have taken the, the metal spikes in there and they ruined their floor a couple of different times, had it, have it refixed by Clifford Hun, or the Hun Brothers, Defiance, so after that, kind of put a stop to it and we don't have restroom facilities down there yet, so we've talked about it, it's kind of in the five, ten-year maybe forecast, maybe hopefully at least get a couple of restrooms below the press box, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for him? Okay, let's do Jeff first.
Oh, man, I was just getting rid of that, I was on that screen back there, give me one second. I want to show, remember, the whole picture, when I wasn't connected to the LMC, it was showing all these different movies that are available. None of them are connected to my computer. Mrs. Hoffman, talk to her. All right, the, uh, high school principal report, um, some past events, uh, we had the, uh, the Hicksville Chamber of Commerce here at the school, we were at the ninth, uh, we had about thirty different, uh, people throughout the community, um, from the small businesses that are, that are in our, uh, that are in our district and it was actually a great opportunity for Mr. Fenchman to speak to them about kind of, uh, the direction our district is going, uh, some of the, the plans that we have pertaining to growth and then of course, you know, we, we kind of, uh, discussed with the members of the chamber, uh, some concerns we have with space, uh, programming opportunities, uh, teachers sharing classrooms and all that stuff, which led us into, I'm sure, a further discussion about the levy and things like that, so it was a great opportunity to talk to a lot of people from our community. The January data dives have been going on, Josh Clark, our EFC consultant, he's the lead nose, they've been a really nice opportunity, we had a, uh, a math, a science, a social studies and an ELA day, um, he established, uh, to pre-report our teachers, he, he provided the information and break down information from the state for our local report card and individual student data, uh, it, it was great because, and, and again, the consultant that he is for our district, he took the time to break that data down and then share with the teachers so they would understand it, uh, looking for opportunities to improve in the classroom, of course, also with the end of course assessments, so again, I'd thank Josh Clark for taking the time to do that. Um, the second quarter, uh, grading period ended on Friday, January eleventh and of course that leads me to talk about the, the third quarter, we actually just made a little bit of decision about midterms, we're postponing midterms one week because up until, uh, I believe Friday, we've only had nineteen days in, in school this quarter, it's been tough getting grades in, getting assessments completed, make up work with, uh, with student attendance, so we're extending midterms a week, but we're not extending the quarter, that way our students have an opportunity to establish a true representation of their, of their progress this quarter and then of course we'll start checking grades for eligibility and things like that. Oh, ISSA updates, um, I'm on the legislative committee for my association and I have the opportunity to go down twice a year to Columbus to discuss some major concerns, uh, I guess with, uh, with, uh, ODE and just a few things I wanted to share with everyone, again, we've been talking about out-of-school suspensions and what kids' services are supposed to be provided and opportunities, um, again, uh, out-of-school suspension is, is a hot topic item where kids are no longer allowed to fail any informal or formal assessments if serving an out-of-school suspension, they have to be given some sort of, of, uh, um, I guess as a district, we have to be able to get some sort of policy that places an opportunity to earn credit and, um, I know that we've spoken about that, so we, we are definitely in compliance with that expectation of the state and it was, it was kind of interesting again because, um, you know, everybody's all over the place because it is a local decision and, uh, there are a lot of different ideas down there, I think there are roughly, uh, there's eighteen or school districts that are part of that committee and so we were kind of all over the place with that, but again, uh, the goal is to, you know, punish a different behavior and not destroy him academically, in my opinion, so, um, a second, uh, I want to be discussed what we're down there, even though it's on the other end of the, uh, the academic spectrum and I know Mrs. Kaufman has spoke about it before, you know, the K-three students, they're, they're pushing the idea that there will be, you'll no longer be able to out-of-school suspend K-three students, that's kind of one of their goals, so, uh, again, just something coming down the pipeline. They discussed in-school suspensions and it being a trigger word and they highly recommended that we look over our student handbooks, uh, this year and over the summer and maybe change that to, uh, in-school restrictions, uh, that, that, that word suspension causes additional EMIS paperwork and requirements that we have reports to the state and even the in-school suspension piece is causing problems and so if we change that to in-school restriction and, you know, keep them in the office for a day or send them to the Opportunity Center, then we can avoid that out-of-school suspension, I guess, stereotype or, or, um, I, I guess title to them, which leads to, again, additional reporting to the state on a kid actually being kicked out of school for a certain amount of time. IEP students and graduation, I printed this off and you're going to notice that this is very similar to what we've been discussing the last few years, uh, in December, um, again, the, the class of twenty eighteen, that they had certain requirements to graduate based on, and of course, assessment tests and eighteen points criteria and of course a subgroup of point totals and then they had some alternate pathways, the state then mentioned that, that's only for that class and after that, every kid will have to earn those eighteen points and of course every student will also not be required or be eligible for these alternate pathways to graduate and they started talking all kinds of craziness about IEP students, well, again, what's the state do, they wait to get preliminary results of who's going to graduate for the class of twenty nineteen and again, they found out about thirty to forty percent of the kids in the state will not graduate according to their criteria, so what do they do, they did a mandate solution again, they actually extended the twenty eighteen graduation requirements to the class of twenty nineteen and it's still up in the air for the class of twenty. Two things to point out is on the backside of the page is the alternate pathways, I just wanted to talk about the IEP kids, um, any kid on an IEP, okay, individualized education plan, special education students, okay, this is something that irritated the heck out of us at our legislative update, last year they were telling us, hey, anyone that's on IEP must take those in the course assessment, so if I'm on a math IEP, okay, and I'm not going to lay John Fass for that, I'm just, I, I probably deserved it, okay, if I was on a math IEP, all right, um, I have to take that in the course assessment, if I score a one or a two, that is not satisfactory, okay, and I do that on the algebra one and I do, say I get a two on the algebra one, I get a one in geometry, I have not met that sub-score and now it's going to be really difficult to get the total of eighteen points, so what they would do is they said, okay, well Jeff, you're on a math IEP, you need to retake those tests one more time, no matter how you do, we're going to give you a three on those tests if you retake them, all right? So, we do that, it's called an exemption, they give us a three, I get my eighteen points, I graduate, okay? Well, this year they decided that, um, oh, excuse me, last year they were talking about saying that, well, they won't count as a graduate then, so they fought off and on about that down in Columbus, how it was going to be handled. So, what did they decide for the class of twenty nineteen, they said, well, you know what, at the local level for your local report card, Jeff Slattery, even though he gave those exemptions, and he gets a diploma and he counts as a graduate, he can go to college, when we report this through EMIS down to the state level, the federal level, he is a dropout, he did not graduate from your school. So that's how it's going to be, look, so pretty much what they're doing is locally they're telling all of us they graduated, but when they report it to the state and federal level, they're not graduates and I know that, that just seems ridiculous, but that's kind of how it's, it's written right now, I don't know if that's going to affect funding, I don't know what that's going to affect, but I just know the reporting, that's the way it's going to be. Now, there is one way to avoid that and this is what we're talking to our, um, Special Education Department about and of course Liz Perna and I actually reached out to Chrissy Chestlock at the Ford County Career Center, I said, listen, this alternate pathway piece, that's on the backside, if we're going to have IEP kids get exempted for these tests to meet that eighteen points, we also need to make sure that our IEP kids choose an alternate pathway, okay? And, and, and that is our goal and it's not as easy as you think, okay? Because a lot of times our IEP kids come from economically disadvantaged homes that do not value education and their attendance stinks and as you can see, one of the top ones is ninety-three percent attendance rate, a lot of those kids are attendance issues, okay, and by the way, next year they said they're going to remove the attendance one. Uh, we do a capstone project, a senior project, currently locally we have our own rules of how we do that, the state is telling us that, I'm hoping not this year, because I hate it when they implement things like April, but they're talking about providing guidelines that all school districts must meet to do a capstone project, okay, as an option for the alternate pathway, so they may, uh, they may come down here and tell us how we have to do that now, but again, that's in the future. So again, we want to avoid this idea of graduates through exemptions and we're going to really push the alternate pathways. Ford County Career Center does a really job, really good job with some of our IEP kids with the Workkeys program, so we're out there trying to find ways and again, it's, it's becoming a major, like, it's like a puzzle and every kid is different, how we're going to get them there and we're trying really, really hard to do that, okay? And, um, you know, we've, we've already, we already have a few, a few kids that have dropped out this year, um, and I, and I, I just want to make sure that the board's aware of that, um, I hate to say this, but we, we've had an influx of students and, um, we've had four kids that have moved into our district from Indiana and Michigan in the last sixteen or eighteen months and they've dropped out, so, um, they're, they're showing up credit deficient and they're turning eighteen and they're just leaving because they have that choice. And I don't want to add any more, you know, students to that list, but I just want you to be aware of that and be upfront about it, because my, I think my first, uh, five graduating classes, everyone graduated, so this will be the first year that we had, we've had dropouts, so, just that's why I'm active, believe me, when that report comes out, I always want it to look pretty, but it may not look as pretty when it comes to the graduation rate this year.
I just had a curiosity from like last year's graduating class, um, how many of them under the new standard would have gotten the correct, would have graduated but would have been classified as a dropout?
For IEP kids?
Yeah.
I think we probably would have had four or five.
So then, you know, this year.
Again, I'm not sure, I hate to say it this way, I have to look at the Ford County graduation requirements because some of those kids are on Workkeys, I'm talking about the kids that are IEP kids at Hicksville, I know that we did exemptions for some of them, um, and they would have counted, they're, they graduated, remember, I know it seems silly to say, they graduated, they get a diploma, if, if Walcraft Industries calls and says, hey, uh, Jeff Slattery, can you confirm that this kid graduated in two thousand seventeen or eighteen? I would say yes, they did, if Moore University called and asked for transcripts for a graduate from Hicksville, we've sent it to him, yes, he did, but when it gets reported to the state and federal level, they're considered non-graduate. Any other questions about that piece? Not to irritate people, but, all right, um, APT program has started its recruitment process, we, uh, we had Tony Niswander come in, he presented to all of our sophomores down in the Commons, um, on February fifth, we took thirteen students that had interest in the program out to APT, Tony led a really nice tour out there, you get the opportunity to meet, uh, the different, uh, machine automation guys, engineers, programmers, all that fun stuff, kind of give an idea of, of what they could have the opportunity to do, uh, next year, um, interviews for that, um, program will begin on March fifth here on our campus. Future events, uh, scheduling for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year is well underway, uh, again, we recommend parents take the time to review class choices, uh, students have the option to do that on their computer, they go right into a program Jeff Shaffer's created, they select their core classes that they're eligible for and then of course the electives that they'd like to take next year. On February twenty-sixth, Carla Hinkle from the Defiance County Workforce Development, she is assisting Hicksville schools and hosting a career fair for our students, um, currently I believe there are thirteen businesses from Hicksville alone that will be representing, uh, or be participating in the, uh, the career fair and there's a handful of other local, uh, uh, businesses she's trying to get a hold of and again, the, the idea is to get our students, they're going to take thirty-minute intervals, grade six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, um, they're going to go down, just go to walk around, talk to the different businesses, talk to an APT, talk to an FWT, talk to the Hicksville Bank and what kind of jobs are here, what kind of, you know, employment opportunities are there, what kind of, um, I guess, do you need an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, that kind, that kind of gathering of information. And then of course, um, on Saturday, March second, coronation will take place at the Huber Opera House, always a good time, always fun and I cannot believe we're talking about March, I know, um, and then of course that'll be followed by a dance here in the Commons at Hicksville, May to eleven. Thursday, March seventh, we have the second round of the innovative interviews, um, I want to point out that OHSA tournaments are beginning next week, uh, so good luck to all of our sports teams and then of course the seniors and then we've got coronation and senior trip coming up and then when they come back, wow, it's a downward spiral, so it's just amazing to me that we're talking about March already.
Some kids in the past that have done the APT program, are there some of them that are working out there for Tony? Some kids in the past that have done the APT program, are there some of them that are working out there for Tony?
Yes, and that's what's kind of neat is, um, you know, we were in there, uh, last week and, and as we walk around, uh, you recognize, uh, a couple of students from the first year. Um, there's one from the second year program and then currently the third year. Um, there's a young man that's been there since we graduated in, uh, in, in June of twenty eighteen, but he's actually taken a different career path. And, and, and to Tony, that's still success, that's the thing. He tells us, he goes, you know, it'd be great to find some homegrown kids that want to stay here and it happens. Because but at the same time, I'm helping kids avoid the, the, the problem of going to college saying, I want to be an engineer, getting there, getting a degree, getting out going, man, this, this stinks, I really don't want to do this. So, um, it, it, it's neat seeing the kids that have gone through the program. There are a few career view kids over there also that are, that are still employed.
Good. Okay. Andy, please?
Hi.
Oh, sorry, comments and questions. Chamber, Luncheon, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Great conversations, um, great information, you guys did a great job. The data dive, where are we going with that next? Like what are, what's the goal now? What are teachers taking away from it?
Well, I mean, I guess it's, it's kind of, it's kind of funny because, you know, we talked about the consultant, the ESC position, our notes over here. You know, we try to be principals, we try to be leaders, we try to be a support person to our staff, for our students, you know? We have PR obligations in the community and, 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 you know, in the, in the county and with, you know, the conference, the GMC conference and the state level. Um, we don't truly have time to break down that data, okay? And it's kind of funny because in Josh's first year here, um, doing his data dive, we learned a lot about kind of what the state's provided us. Now that they have data to support, because you know, the first couple of years, we had nothing to refer to. So now, now they've got, you know, kind of a track record of data being collected for three, four years and we have students that we're tracking now. How old are they doing their sixth grade year, their seventh grade year, their eighth grade year? Now, well now they're freshmen. And the standards of how they build upon each other, um, the value-added scores, we have no access to those. Only the, the teachers have access to their own scores, we can't even do those. So, you know, I guess the goal is this, Josh Clark comes in and as an individual teacher, you know, we don't have four Algebra One teachers at Hicksville, we have one Algebra One teacher. So the individual teacher, he leads them in there, breaks down by the standard and then they start looking for trends in their data. They can look for subgroups that they can improve on. Um, and, and so that's what it is for the individual teacher. And then they know where to focus maybe, uh, for that year to make sure they don't have the same problems maybe. But also, you know, for Jeff Hogg or Donna Lysen, whoever's next in line, they know that the kids struggled here. They may need to put more time reviewing that and building upon those skills. Um, when it comes to the actual end of course assessment, when we start focusing on that piece, again, if for three consecutive years in a row, we're struggling with a specific standard, okay? It's not just that the students, it's the actual standard being taught, we can start focusing on those standards to make sure we're doing a good job. And then of course, you know, remember the prepare for success piece, that was another, another piece that when, when you get three or four teachers in a room and you can speak to them, we can break that report card down and information down a lot easier for understanding questions compared to standing in the Commons with, you know, seventy-five teachers who, you know, half of them aren't even, I mean, I hate to say it, but it's a different language to them because they're not in tested areas, so.
Yeah, they can specifically point to what's, what standards are you struggling or which ones are you doing well at? What subgroups, you know, some teachers really hit that high population of students and those trends are awesome. And then, you know what, with those low red kids, you've got to find a way to pick that up a little bit. And so it gives them an idea of specifically where we are doing well and where you need to work at. Uh, it gives teachers an opportunity for a lot of professional discussions. Uh, you know, our math department is, as far as accelerating math students, so is a yearly conversation. But again, it gives them a chance to sit down and look at standards and when should we do it, what should our criteria be and things like that. Um, so it's just a good opportunity for them to sit down and have professional dialogue, to look at themselves, to look at us and the program and where we're going.
And another benefit of that too is, you know, Josh leads this and he does a phenomenal job and him being an administrator or principal, you know, that gives him a, a, a definitely a great angle and approach to, he understands what we want, but at the same time, we're not in there the whole time, okay? We come in, we come and go because there are certain parts that we participate in and there are certain parts we remove ourselves because the teachers can be honest and talk about things and maybe the support they need, resources they need, you know, the time they need. And, and then Josh can share it with us too. So it's, it's, it was all four days were great days.
Alright, me, I'm up?
Yep.
Alright, um, so past events, our eighth grade girls team, uh, girls basketball team, uh, competed in the GMC championships last week. Uh, the girls lost, they were runner-up to the championship game. Uh, within a great year, they finished seventeen and two, and then conference runners-up, so great season ladies. Our eighth grade boys bowed out tonight in the second round of the GMC tournament, they lost to Holgate. Again, a great season for those young men. January twenty-fifth, Mr. Farrell and our STEAM program held a professional development day for Ottawa Hills. Um, and, and hosted most of their administrators, their curriculum coordinators, uh, librarians, art, art teachers. And again, I think it's a great opportunity for us to kind of show off what we're doing, show off some of our programming. Uh, and I think anytime Ottawa Hills comes, it's a good, it's a good day, you know you're doing something right and they want to come and see what you're doing. Uh, so again, congratulations to Mr. Farrell and all of our students, uh, for doing a great job representing our school and, and, uh, showing what kind of progress we've made in that program. Some future events, February thirteenth, a few days from now, we will have a two-hour delay for teacher aid service, just a reminder to everybody. On February twenty-second, Shaylee Miller and Ryland Bassett will be heading to Atlanta to compete, uh, at the Amazing Shake at RCA. Uh, should be a great experience for both kids, I'm excited for both to have the opportunity to do it, uh, and good luck to both of them. February twenty-sixth, the same day that we are having the, uh, career center, our eighth grade students will be going to four county the morning before and they'll, they'll flip flop. Um, and they're going to four county just to get the idea of some of the programming that's offered out there, some of the opportunities that if they maybe down the road have an interest in. Uh, I think that number one gives them some ideas of what four county is like before they really get to that point. And also lets you know what kind of expectations need to be met as a student for you to be able to be there. Uh, so our students have a great opportunity to go there and see two or three things there. A few things that I wanted to just touch on quickly, I know that this is the first year that we've implemented Tackle as a program in our school. And I just wanted to kind of let you know kind of where we're at. Uh, there's a girl by the name, a young lady by the name of Caitlin Gaseburg is the one who runs that. And we, she's currently serving twenty-four kids free to the district, um, and doing a great job with it. You know, we talk all the time about it's not maybe what the program is, it's who leads it. Um, I see her all the time in the hallways, working with our kids, teaching them coping skills, she's down in cafeteria with them.
She's actually in classrooms.
Yeah, she's, she's doing a great job. It's primarily in middle school and elementary kids because I think that's kind of the, the target audience right now for Tackle. Uh, but we're always sending new referrals to them. And one of the nice things, besides the fact that she's working on those coping skills and those social skills, um, is that she, when we cancel, she actually gets out and goes to the home and meets those kids. So they're still getting something. She goes out there during the summertime, summer hours. So it, it's reaching kids at times when maybe we're not able to or we're not, we're not doing that. Uh, like I said, she's doing a great job and she's hoping, hoping to be, uh, therapy certified as well down the road. Where she could also offer some, some therapy-based support to some of our kids, which would be another huge plus for us, I think. Mrs. Chamberlain speaking to go to a nice job, uh, Mrs. Chamberlain does a great job for us as our middle school guidance counselor. Uh, one of the things that she started this year I think has been awesome is middle school groups. Uh, and they're identifying kids that have different things going on. Middle school's a, it's a rough time. I don't remember what it was like for you guys, but rough for some of these kids. And, and they're going through a lot, they're going through divorce, they're going through depression. They have stress, anxiety, I don't know if you guys have seen, but we've had a lot of our kids who've been writing our ACE's emails and they're all talking about stress, I mean, you guys are eighth graders, how are you so stressed, what they, what they are. Um, and, and Mrs. Chamberlain is giving them the opportunity to kind of sit down, have lunch together with kids who are going through what they're going through, who are, are having the same issues. And it really gives them the opportunity, like I said, to just know you're not alone. Uh, that teaches them some of the, of the skills and the tools necessary to kind of survive middle school, if you will. So, again, great job of Mrs. Chamberlain, it's been another positive program that, that she's been running for us this year. Uh, lastly, I wanted to touch on the idea again, um, looking to go to periods next year for grades five through eight, I know I've kind of brought it up a few times. And again, looking to kind of create opportunities for our kids, consistency for our kids in specials. Uh, some of our students, for example, they kind of, as they go through specials, it's possible to have music once or twice a month when we have some of these cancellations and we have some of these things going on. Uh, so the idea would be that students who are going to the specials would be there for the entire semester. Every day for a semester, I think creates some continuity for that teacher and it's a consistency for the kids, which I think is important. I think it allows us to use our teachers and, and fully utilize our teachers. Just for a few examples, we're talking about the ELL population. Uh, Jessica Saunders is a teacher of ours who is going back to school to get her ELL license. We didn't have enough kids to make her a full-time ELL student, but I could give her a period to a day. I plan on giving her a period to a day where she can work with any K twelve ELL student that we have. While it may not be perfect, it is a temporary solution for us in a way that we're able to, to hit a population of kids that, that needs us to be hit. Uh, it allows Mr. Farrell and our STEAM program the opportunity to continue to grow. Uh, we're looking to grow that into high school, again, so it's no longer just a, a middle school thing, it's something that as those kids grow and their skills grow, uh, that class has the opportunity to go with them. And I think that's incredibly important to hit, um, a very specific group of our students that, that need that hands-on learning and really appreciate that ability. So, um, looking to do that, there's definitely some challenges with scheduling, I know we've started scheduling. Uh, but I think it's going to be a good thing for us in middle school. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. Thanks for. Next, Kristen.
Um, a few weeks ago, we, we did our teacher of the quarter again. And I know that Andy does that too because I copied off of him. Um, but this gives the opportunity for students to get to nominate, um, teachers. And we, I, I probably get about forty nominations in and so, um, Ms. Lee was the winner this time for a twenty-five dollar gift card. I just randomly, actually I have somebody else randomly pick it out. But then I'm also awarding, um, the ones that get the most nominations. And I know the first quarter, um, Mr. Meiser and, um, Mrs. Altman both had the mo- they, they both had the same amount. And this time again, um, Jamie Altman had eleven nominations, when typically teachers are receiving two to three, so that really speaks volumes. Um, I don't know if some of you got a chance to see, um, a letter that I had written, uh, and placed on Facebook. Um, last week we received a very large banner. Um, it was, um, entitled, "Two Thousand Eighteen High Progress School of Honor." Um, because we service, um, forty percent economically disadvantaged students and we're, um, identified as a title school. Over the last five years, we've shown a growth in the ninetyth percentile in ELA and math. And so, um, ODE, um, gave this award, um, to the elementary. And I mean, I, I, I don't know if it's just something, it, it is something new that they're doing this year, but I'm, it was dated in December. And then today I got another one, um, that said, "Two Thousand Eighteen Overall A Award." So, they're always doing something new. Um, but this one said that our elementary school's report card shows that our school is demonstrating high academic performance. Ohio's, uh, strategic plan is to ensure that each student is challenged, prepared and empowered by an excellent pre-K through twelve education. Um, so that second banner came today. Um, on this Friday, we have the Next Math Club, we have forty-seven new participants that will be dancing on the table. Um, currently we have a hundred and twenty-one kiddos in this little club. Um, this is just a great opportunity, lots of parents and great parents come out, um, and have lunch um, with their participant. And so it's just, it's a great PR opportunity too, I think, for school. We also have spring pictures on Friday. It's hard to say that it's going to be spring pictures, but it's next this Friday. Um, also next week we are starting ELL testing. The state requires, once we identify these students, um, within thirty days of them coming to our school as an English language learner, then we have a window to give them, um, a test to see how they're progressing. And there's four sections in the test. Um, they range from like kindergarten, taking twenty minutes approximately per test, to up in the high school level, forty-five minutes per test. Um, they're all online and our title teachers will be giving those tests. We have fifteen students, we've had, um, we've had some of our, um, students move out, um, recently uh, because I think their parents were working in the Paulding area, but they were living here in Hicksville. So, um, we've had about four students move out in the last month to two months. We have a family literacy night coming up on March eleventh from five to seven. Um, Mrs. Sandy Brown and the title teachers are putting that on, it's a space theme this year. Um, the spring one is always a great time because we do a dinner, uh, a free dinner for five to six and then from seven to eight, lots of games and stations and different opportunities for the kids to participate. And every child goes home with, um, typically a book. And I think it's a bag and they do big raffles, um, family geared prizes. We also have two thousand and nineteen kindergarten registration on March fourteenth and fifteenth coming up. Um, we have almost forty, um, students registered for that and, um, taking reservations in the office.
Kristen, does that include the, the preschool kiddos?
No.
That forty?
No, these are just new ones. Yes, so that would be what, fifty-five? Oh, no, 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 it is preschool, I'm thinking young five, I'm thinking Gail's class. It doesn't include Gail's class.
We have, and there are like thirty-some kids from the preschool that would be going to kindergarten.
So yes, the preschool gets a part of that, sorry, that number. I don't think all of them have called, but yes. So, we've got almost forty and then we've got Gail's fifteen, so we're up to about a class of fifty-five at least right now.
Which is pretty standard.
Pretty decent.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's about it, where, uh, we've been meeting, um, to get our testing dates finalized. Um, yay, fun, fun, so let's come in.
Alright, thank you. I do not have a report from Denny tonight for the four county career, so we'll go on to the levy committee report. Thank you ladies for being here.
Hi, Kelly Van Farren, this is Lisa Slattery and we're here to talk about the Hicksville Schools Levy Campaign. About two weeks ago, the campaign steering committee met to begin discussions about the Hicksville Schools Levy Campaign. This committee is chaired by Greg and Lisa Slattery and also includes Menda Jones, Kate Countryman, Tyler Saylor, Bob and Shelley Weatherhead and myself. There is a levy Facebook page called Hicksville School Levy Two Thousand Nineteen, which we encourage the community members to like and share. There's a frequently asked questions page attached to this Facebook page that gives more details about the three-quarter percent tax levy that will be on the ballot on May seventh. This levy would help build an academic center and fieldhouse and the private drive to connect the school to state route eighteen. On this Facebook page, community members can also find links to learn about absentee ballots and how to become a registered voter.
Last evening, we held an initial meeting with some of our community members to jumpstart the levy campaign and we need more and would love more to join us. We have established such committees as the social media group, an email mail group, a door-to-door group, a phone call group, letters to the editor and science group, and a committee to ensure voter registration and absentee ballots. While we had a great number of people pledge to help, we always need more and would love more volunteers for these committees. And if there are others that would like to help, they can contact any of the steering committee or there's links on the Facebook page that they can just, um, sign up through the Facebook page. We've also, um, are going to set, have set up a public, um, meeting, or a meeting, initial meeting for the public to join us on March third at six PM in the school's comment, comment to learn more about the levy. And we encourage everyone to vote yes for our levy on May seventh. Thank you.
What was the date again for the meeting?
For the meeting is March third, six o'clock in the morning. That's great, thank you. If some of you that are driving would like to go. Thank you very much.
Okay, was there a question, or was that email you were going to talk about?
I just wanted to share with you, but, um, I want to add something about what Andy mentioned and that's the success of our school and, 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 you know, we're getting phone calls, it seems like every other week from other districts asking us how we're having so much success with, you know, with these data dives, which are the result of like our report cards and where we're ranked, you know, third in the state based on economics, forty-fifth in the state. Um, we worked with another school, Upper Soto Valley, last Friday, uh, we did a teleconference with them for a couple hours. Um, there's an email from this gentleman, Winford. Josh Clark and I are actually meeting with Winford and Cary High School because we're just trying to share what we're doing here is right. And I want to give a shout out to all our staff because before we talk to these other districts about what we're doing, I guess academically or, uh, you know, our process of doing things, we always say that number one, I go, we have a great staff and our staff cares and our staff is competitive. And I said, and, and it's, it, it, it's good, it's hard to do anything that we did unless your staff cares and is competitive. And, and believe me, we were in the same hole you guys were in four years ago, we passed three indicators. And, and the administrative team, we felt like a bunch of Debbie Downers after our first day. I go, but you got, you have to start somewhere and everybody has to realize the reality of where you're at and you're contacting us because you were where we were at four years ago. I said, but once you get through that piece, you're going to find out how great your staff is, you're going to find out, you know, you know, like, hey, so we have a great staff. And if you don't have that, it's going to be hard to. And if you don't have that, it's going to be hard to achieve what we have. So I just want to give a shout out to our staff for being awesome. And then, of course, you know, Hicksville's awesome, so it's great to work here.
Amen.
That makes the highlight real.
I'm always graceful.
Mike Short, we are working on next year's calendar already, and we have that, two or three of them to run by Mrs. Culler when she is back here with us. And then they will take those and present those to the staff. There are no changes, really, it's pretty much the same as last year. We talked about that date change, and that's not going to happen. So it's pretty consistent, what we've always had for the last several years. So we'll start the week after fair week as normal. And we've got a couple end dates. All of them, I think, go right around Memorial Day, so. They already talked about Ottawa Hills. We have one cancellation day left. So one cancellation day that the kids would be allowed to miss. And then after that, we tack them on to the end of the year. So it is February, I'll remind the community, it is February. It's northwest Ohio. It's winter. And if we don't know how to drive on winter roads by now, then we should move to Florida. So, I like that idea, yeah, yeah. So, you know, just keep that in mind as we move forward and progress through the rest of the winter. I, you know, we, we, you get kind of used to winter as time goes on, and we should be pretty comfortable with that. So obviously, if ice is involved, it's a different story. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we've been working with Hot Shot Trucking for our buses. Schmitz will continue to do some work on our vehicles, like our cars and vans. But most of our repairs for our buses is now, is now going to be done by John Brown from Hot Shot Trucking. He has a place that Eric found for us out here on Jericho Road. And I, Eric and Diane and John and I met with him. And Schmitz has done a great job for us over the years. Jake Timbrough, I can't say enough great things about him. Their business is growing out there in a way that the bay that they use to do our buses is not available as often. And we're obviously have, we have a bus down, we have to have it fixed, and we can't wait for that bay to be available. So Schmitz certainly understand that, and so we're going to work together with Schmitz and Hot Shot Trucking as we transition our buses to, to John Brown. And that is my report for the month.
Okay.
I assume Hot Shot has all the proper credentials liability-wise?
He does, and, you know, as I said, Schmitz do a great job. John has a diesel business, so he, all his, he has a fleet of diesel trucks as well. So he's very familiar with working on diesel vehicles, which our buses are diesel. And, you know, yes, so, yeah, he's very knowledgeable on that, yeah. Anything you want to add on that, Eric?
He has a couple more certifications than, like Jake would have, the Easy Air Brake Certified. He's a Hicksville, he's Hicksville graduate. He lives in town. He moved his business from Farmer, used to be Farmer Truck Repair, right there in town. And he moved out to Jericho. He just moved into their brand-new building in January. He's hoping, like, for bus inspections, he can be able to get six or eight buses in his shop all at one time and just do the inspections there. He'll have all of his mechanics on duty. He has three mechanics, including himself, that have their CDL licenses, and can come and get buses and bring them back out or, or, you know, makes it nice and convenient, so.
That's it. We've been doing business with them for many years. They have treated this school, this community, very well. They're on board with this?
Absolutely, they're on board with it, yeah. We, we spoke with Schmitz out there, yeah, and Jim as well, and, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's a good transition. They're, they're, they're fine with it. We're still going to utilize Schmitz for our other vehicles, yeah, so, yeah. And John Brown, Eric had told me the, the week that we had the really severe cold. We had, we didn't have enough buses for the following day because they were gelling up. And I'm like, we are not canceling school. So I called John Brown, and he actually met me at the bus bar. And he and I were out there till, I think it was almost eleven o'clock that night, working on buses to get them so that they were up and running, and, and we were able to have school the next day. So that was a good thing.
Well, thank you also for that.
That's right.
I just wanted to have school. It, it was just Defiance County Schools, that's right. And, you know, I'm glad you said that, Steph, because it's, you know, calling delays is not a popular job. You either do it right or you do it wrong, and you usually don't do it right to everybody in the community. But I wanted the community to know, and I always said this every year, I don't know if I said it this year or not, that I speak with all the superintendents in the county whenever there's a question about the, the weather and the roads. So it's not a key countryman decision. It's, you know, we all work together on it. Now, there's times that, you know, maybe Antwerp and Edgerton will cancel, and we don't, like last week. But, you know, the criteria in Paulding County might be a little bit different than what the criteria is for us here in Defiance and so forth in Williams. So I just want you to know that we work together, the six of us, Good Sam and Ayersville to North, Defiance and Central Oakland and myself. And we communicate whenever there's a question about the weather, so.
I appreciate the early warnings on that, like the delays.
Like this morning, it was nice and early, yes, yeah, definitely.
And even when you knew it was going to be, you know, negative three hundred degrees out there, you know, we got to notice the night before.
Right.
You know, and that's very occasional.
If it's a no-brainer, we do that, it gives the parents a little more time, but.
Especially the younger kids, getting, you know, somebody to watch them and all that.
Just another plug for our, you know, our app that we have, and then the website. For, for me to call the delay is just a matter of a couple pushes of the buttons, and it goes to all of those, Facebook, Twitter, everything, with just the push of one button. So it's really convenient. And, you know, we have found this company to be Johnny-on-the-spot. I mean, I don't think we've really had issues. I mean, yeah, so. Good. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Are there any items that need to be returned from, or removed from the consent agenda? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Okay.
Jim.
Step, Jim, okay. Roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Do I have a motion to approve minutes and financials? Also, Jared and Steph, thanks. The minutes from the organizational meeting on January seventh, two thousand nineteen, minutes from the regular board meeting on January seventh, two thousand nineteen, and minutes from the work session meeting on January seventh, two thousand nineteen. Recommend to waive the reading of the board minutes unless otherwise stated. Treasurers' report, cash reconciliation as of January two thousand nineteen, financial statements for January two thousand nineteen. Accept the following donations: two hundred and fifty dollars from Three Rivers Conservation for Archery. Any discussion? Okay, there was one correction in the minutes on page thirty-four. It has, this student liaison committee is inappropriate in our minutes. Can you get down to the one that has Jared?
I think it says Legislative.
Yeah, thirty-four. Jared Wonderly as Legislative Liaison to OSBA. It's not. That is stepped from the one above. It is Jared Wonderly as Student Achievement Liaison for two thousand nineteen. So that was the correction.
I see it.
Okay. All right. Melissa, do you have any comments about the treasurer's report?
Just a couple things. Our cafeteria is still heading in the right direction. If you looked at the spreadsheet that I gave you, there was a little hiccup there. I don't want to say hiccup, but the, but the ending balance went up just a little bit in the wrong direction just because of severance that's paid out in January. So other than that, I still am projecting that those expenses in the cafeteria will continue to go down as payroll and benefits are no longer being paid to our retirees. Our fourth quarter two thousand eighteen income tax disbursement came in in January of two thousand nineteen with a hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred, four hundred five dollars and ninety-five cents being our net collections. That is about six point five-two percent higher than what it was last year. So we're still trending up, although I think that that's kind of, it's not trending up as high as what it used to because I think we're kind of seeing our, our normal trend there.
Just out of curiosity, what percentage do you assume on, on a five-year forecast for that? I mean, do you?
For our increase?
Yeah.
I, I can't remember what it was. I want to say I was thinking between five and seven percent.
Still, that could be.
Right.
I mean, probably close, but it could be down a little bit potentially.
Right. We also received twenty-four thousand, five eighty-eight, eighty-nine of casino revenue in January. This was down a hundred and forty dollars and nineteen cents from our January two thousand eighteen payment, so that's not very much. It's still pretty standard. I know. Maybe gamble more. Keith and I attended the superintendent treasurer meeting at the ESCU on February fifth. The initial cost estimate for fiscal year twenty special ed cost is seven hundred sixty-two thousand, three fifty-four eleven. So this is roughly a five percent increase from the fiscal year nineteen mid-year estimate, which, you know, kind of makes you want to choke. But it is, it is what it is. Increased special ed numbers at the IEC is one of the main contributors of this increase. And the cost, that cost alone is like thirty percent of the increased bill from fiscal year nineteen to twenty. So as Cary said earlier tonight, I mean, we do have a lot of, we have a lot of special ed needs that we have to meet, so. The state tax reimbursement, I did turn around and check with a couple district, I guess, area treasurers. They do do the services on their own, so I can, I think I can kind of, I can kind of gather some information. I'm going to try to manage it on my own and see if I can get it. And if not, I'm sure that fellow treasurer will help me out if I need anything. The proposed cost of the fiscal year eighteen audit, which is currently going on, and I'm hoping that they will be gone soon, is seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I'm praying, I'm praying.
Okay, when she called me about that, she said that the state threw in a couple other hoops that have to be jumped through, and that is what raised the price considerably.
I was close to that cost last year, wasn't I?
It was like sixteen-eight, maybe, sixteen?
She thought it would be a couple thousand dollars at least more.
So I, I was happy with, I was happy with this.
When it came in.
When it came in, so. I think the one auditor thought she, her last day would be today, then today. She said, no, probably tomorrow, but I'm hoping that they wrap up this week. Spend a long, spend a long month, we'll put it that way.
Just so you know, do you remember Jake Thiel, Mrs. Jones? Yeah, he's one of, one of our, one of them working here, graduate from here a few years ago.
I think two thousand twelve.
Yeah.
When he graduated, so he said. Keith had spoke with John Kaler from Neola. We had talked about the credit card policy. That's all been taken care of with our last update, so that was good news. Just a few things as to what's been going on in the treasurer's office. Miscellaneous ten ninety-nines, we've gone through those. Ten ninety-nines percent out, I believe on the twenty-fifth. I did file the two thousand eighteen perk report for the BWC, which is basically telling them how many incidents or accidents we've had. Excess costs have been submitted to ODE and approved. So those numbers should start tripling in within the next few months. And I did schedule ACH payments for our frontier bills, so those are automatically deducted from our account. Pretty much everything, then, in the financial part of it, is pretty consistent. I, anything, I guess, like in revenues or other interest and open enrollment, our open enrollments are up, which is good. And our investment interest receipts at the, are, are also up due to the better interest rates that we're getting right now. So that is one of the main contributors to the increase on that section. Expenses in the transportation, we did also pay out severance for a retirement for a transportation aid. So transportation costs appear to have gone up a little bit from what they were the previous year. And when you're looking at the other piece, there was an academic supplemental activities. The majority of the difference was basically a tiny issue with how someone, actually, how two people were paid. We had a, our flag and major editor advisor last year had not turned in all of her payroll paperwork. At this point in time, she kind of waited for the end of the year, so you'll see that, that difference at the end of the year. So other than that, I don't have anything else. If anyone has any questions.
I just have a question about the benefits and the expenses. Were you going to overestimate it? How much are we talking?
It'll kind of balance itself out. I did get with STRS. I think you'll see, I'm not exactly sure now that you asked me that. Not exactly sure how much that'll go down, but like, each month, I want to say it's going to be like a five-thousand-dollar savings. Somehow, whenever they calc, like, I had turned in the calculation last year. We were kind of spending a lot faster. That has kind of backed down and will back off from the, from the payroll estimate that we had supplied. Which basically, I think I just took like what it was in the past, and I would just add two and a half percent. But it was like we were paying, STR seemed to have bumped up a lot faster. It was, we paid a lot quicker. So now it, as of the January payment, it's kind of coming back down. Does that make sense?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, I would think, you know, you have ten employees and you're paying it in fourteen percent.
But we don't, but STRS does not do it like that.
Okay.
S-STR, I know, you would think that, okay, payroll.
You got ten employees.
I pay you, it's fourteen percent, you put this money in a bucket, and that's how it works. It doesn't work like that. STRS and SERS both, they have their own little happy calculation, and then they take that out of your foundation payment. So even though payroll might be different each week, that's not, you don't turn around and submit that then every two weeks to STRS. That's not how they do it. They kind of come up with their own calculation, and then that's what you basically pay every, every month.
So if you overestimated initially, it's just going to make it up as the year goes on because you're going to be taking less, I mean.
Right. Any other, anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Carrier? Iden?
Yes.
Yes, Mazzer?
And Wonderly?
Yes.
The motion carried, five to zero. Do I have a motion to approve employment of certified staff? Jen, thank you.
I'll second.
Great, thanks. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Mike Altman, co-head cross-country coach, thirty-seven percent. Co-junior high cross-country coach, thirty-seven percent. And co-minis across-country coach, thirty-seven percent. Nikki Boselman, head volleyball coach. Jeff Hott, head golf coach. Paul Paint, co-head cross-country coach, sixty-three percent. Co-junior high cross-country coach, sixty-three percent. Co-minis across-country, sixty-three percent. Lucas Smith, head football coach.
That is supposed to be Mike, not Jamie?
Yeah, I was wondering that, too.
Jamie's always the cross-country coach.
She's, she has, she's going to have the baby, so.
Oh, she is.
I see that, Mike. Mike has a tycoe.
I'm doing that.
I didn't know she was right.
Okay, that's all right.
It's like, all right.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazzer?
Yes.
And Wonderly?
Yes.
The motion carried, five to zero. Do I have a motion for the employment of classified staff?
I'll second.
Jared and Craig, thanks. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Shelley Comiso, mat staff advisor. Jeff Ruhoff, minis wrestling coach. Recommend to approve a one-hundred-dollar per occurrence stipend to John Adams and Eric Bassett for snow removal during non-school hours. Any discussion?
Thanks for coming in, in the area.
Yes, isn't that fun?
Yes, thanks for, thanks for working.
Twenty after four this morning.
Well, you've got some work to do on the sidewalks already, but I can tell you that.
Thanks for your hundred bucks. All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazzer?
Yes.
And Wonderly?
Yes.
The motion carried, five to zero.
Yep.
I need a motion for the employment of classified staff. Jen?
I'll second.
Jared? Thanks. Recommend to approve Christine Shock as a classified substitute for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Any discussion? No, but I think she'll be great in ten years' time. All right, roll call, please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazzer? And Wonderly?
Yes.
The motion carried, four to zero with one extension. Do I have a motion for the approval of services and agreements?
I'll move.
Great, thank you.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jared. Thanks, Jared. Recommend to approve an audit agreement between the Hicksville Exempt Village Schools and the Auditoria Estate for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. The cost of the service is seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Can I say that I don't want that we have to do this? I mean, we have to be, I have no choice.
Me neither.
Is there an option that you can do it every other year if you wanted to?
We kinda had that discussion last year.
There, there is.
Last year because they didn't, they said they didn't have time.
But there, but there, it would all probably, I don't think it would be much of a cost savings, but the benefit to doing it every year is just that if you've made a mistake or there's an issue, then they're letting you know.
You find it sooner.
Granted, twelve months later, but you find it sooner than twenty-four months later. Yeah.
But I think all of those twenty-four months, it's not seventeen thousand, it's not double, but it's real close to it, so from a cost savings standpoint, it's.
Yeah, it's more than that. Right. I still just don't like saying that you have to do this.
Yeah.
And you get to pay us.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazzer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Do I have a motion to approve other business? Okay, Jen? Do I have a second? Oh, Seth, I'm sorry. Recommend to approve the two thousand nineteen Board of Education scholarship amount at seven hundred dollars. Discussion?
Great.
That question was a little late.
Yeah.
Yeah, last one.
Yeah.
Yep.
You don't remember? It came out of your check.
It came late, that's probably why. You probably showed me and I saw you.
We did.
Uh, roll call please.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazzer?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion carried, five to zero. Is there any old business? Okay, any discussion of items you'd like to have? Except that Ron Clark is gonna be on the Survivor TV show on February twentieth.
Really?
There've been a couple commercials, yeah.
Interference.
The guy that we went to in Atlanta, that's just a fabulous guy.
I had someone from the community email me about the coffee shop being made public. And if there had been any discussion here with how it's about, how that was gonna impact. And I, I didn't know what to respond because I, I was under the understanding it wasn't really impacting the traffic, if that matters.
I don't think it has.
It said it hasn't happened, I heard.
Okay.
Yep.
It has not. But I told her I would ask.
In fact, they're going through the process right now of figuring out, he may have to do a lot split or whatever, but he's trying to work his way through the legalities to be able to put in a, a, a nicer driveway with a larger traffic flow and even a, a small parking lot on the property for the permanent structure. So he's really trying to make it so that the, the traffic flow will continue to be moved through as quickly as possible.
The only stalled traffic on two is from us. Not, not the coffee shop.
Hey, we're, we're trying, we're trying.
We are. Okay. Tony, would you like to address the board?
I would, if you wouldn't mind, thanks for your patience.
Thank you for.
I think it's not a problem. It seems like I always end up getting the last word on. So, I think everybody here knows where I live. Um, well, maybe, maybe you don't know is where I live. I live basically where the new drive was. Chamber Commerce sign, there on Eighteenth, is the east, west edge of my yard, and will be coming out when your driveway comes in. Um, obviously the property owner, I have several questions. I talked to Mr. Slattery at the wrestling meet, um, on Saturday. Um, which somebody mentioned it'd be two-thirds and a fourth, by the way, and that, um, so, and we had a discussion. I spoke to Mr. Carrier as well, invited him to Texas afternoon, just to ask a couple questions, and she suggested coming here. When the school was originally built, um, the original plan was to have that road drive, we'll call it, that went all the way down there. I understand at the time was, uh, John Burkholder, the owner of the farmland around that area, had donated the right one. John stopped at my house after doing several renovations and upgrades and remodels of my home. He knew I had a lot of time and money invested in it, and he stopped in and said, hey, he was, I'm gonna give the school the right way. He says, that way we don't have to split it. He says, I will donate it all. As things progressed, the finance county economic group came in at one point in time and was talking about bringing the road from Industrial Drive out to Eighteen, which would benefit the school because the school obviously then only has to go a hundred yards versus three hundred quarter mile, whatever happens to be. Absolutely understand. One thing led to another and then both fell through. Now, I've also heard rumors that John, um, had rescinded the offer of donating the right way, without profit. And that is where I'm concerned is to where we're at with the drive, where it's gonna go, and hoping that we can get some, you know, I'm not here to say yes or no, obviously, you know, I, I understand the school's predicament. Mr. Slattery and I spoke, you know, it's a bad design in the school. You have one end, you have one out. He has it traffic backed up almost all the way to Slattery Oil Company at times. I've seen it, I've been there, done that. Maybe the coffee shop should deliver to all the people. It's stalled out there, you know. Um, you know, I come in, if I, if, you know, like before my kids are driving, if I had dropped the kids off, I came out, went out late, came in this way, we just come in that way, it was a lot easier. Still getting out was, I believe was scarier, said it would be one of the menacing, actually nightmare. I've seen it, it's ugly, I understand. So my question is, is what questions can you answer for? One, where's the driveway going?
Well, first, it's not going anywhere unless the living pass is.
Correct. Hypothetically.
Eric, do you wanna explain exactly?
I was just pulling this all up, so. If I could show them kinda like, I didn't, this was kinda of.
Is there any way you could put it on that, or would that be, take too long to do?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not that guy.
Do you guys have the Bluetooth on that? So you should be able to, there should be a number code on it.
You should give you an airplane. Let me see what you're gonna show them.
And then the other one is just a parcel. Get ready.
We, um, we own the land already. We always own.
Okay.
You're right, that, that sign does, by the looks of it.
Oh, yeah. Trust me, I know because when they put the, the.
The yellow is the school property.
So, um, just so you guys are aware, when you ever put the rebar in it, um, it's gonna need a metal detector to find it because they didn't bury it real far. And, yeah, when my lawnmower hit it, it.
It hit up on the side.
It bit the blade, stopped my lawnmower and, whoa.
I buried it.
This is the chamber sign?
Uh, well, no, this is where, this is where it's posted, where they marked and buried.
Oh.
The survey worker.
Survey, the rebar that they used.
Okay.
Yeah, it did, it did a number on my lawnmower, at least that part.
It's, uh, well, he probably, he's pulling that out.
And originally donated that land? The strip of land? Who gave that?
Or John Burkholt.
You should, you should give him a code if it's something to, uh, show him.
Yeah, it's asking for the clever touch, it's asking for the code.
And it usually pops up on a little white screen, but I don't see that on yours. But yours has a different model than mine.
Oh.
The rear was bad health?
A safety cane, can I just thought it'd be easy for everybody to.
I understand that. It's not something along the, like, we don't have to walk the side.
No, it, it really, it should have a little. This, if we have the cord, if we have a cord here.
Why is it on Android?
I don't know, but if we do HDMI, it'll need a cord to plug in, is there a cord in the teachers' desk? Just go ahead and show it to him.
Yeah. We're calling it a drive, Tony.
I understand.
Yeah. We, uh, one of the concerns that's been for years is safety, we have too, is we don't want trucks and stuff going through there.
So how is that gonna be monitored?
Um, well, what we're envisioning, I mean, you know, just very preliminary is at each end, at each entrance to that drive, there would be a low, uh, arch of some kind, like, I don't know, I, you know.
Something that looks up semi is just a lot of garbage trucks, yeah.
No, no garbage trucks either. It would be just for passenger vehicles only.
Okay.
It would only allow, you know, like when you pull into a parking garage and they have that.
Yep.
There would be something like that, so it only would allow passenger vehicles. No buses or semis.
Because on this end, it wouldn't be out here. It would be at the back of our property where our drive stops now.
I know where, I know where you're gonna do that.
That's where the arch would start.
Solar fields go.
The other would be the other end.
Solar field would be, there's a layer on there.
Would it be over here?
Yep. No, 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 no. Solar field's down here.
Oh, I'm sorry, game, my bad.
It's here.
Could you use a point that my house did?
I thought this was the room.
What's that?
You could point that at my house, dude.
It's a tracking system. It's gonna be all fenced into the back corner here, would be the solar field. This is the property we own. It's just a straight strip of land to the back corner. And so where we currently own, what we currently have, the yard out back, that we already maintain everything, uh, the destroyers takes care of part of it, but right here is the line for where it stops. Or here's the retention pond, and then it would come around the retention pond angle over to the, air, that strip of land that we own, and that would go straight to Eighteen.
And drop two thousand linear feet. Just from the west side of my property, and basically it's on the west end, the west end, right?
So if I go to the parcel, but this is, but this is, this is a sign you're talking about.
Correct. Yeah, so that played a little bit.
Yeah, so currently the school property is here, and the retention pond's located here, up above, and then the drive would continue over, make the angle around the pond, come straight down. And then the sign coming into Hicksville is right here on the corner of, looks like our property, corner of, if you zoom in on that one, and then this is your house here. But, yeah, the school did do that property on June first, two thousand six, was when the school obtained that strip of property.
So like I said, the rumor that we had heard was that something was, that, that, that Jonathan donated it and then something had happened and he rescinded it, and that was the rumor, that's the reason I wanted to ask. Then Mr. Slattery said the same thing, and I wasn't doubting what Jeff had said. I just wanna make sure, you know, talk to you guys, you know, just come up with, you know, some questions. Um, obviously there's gonna be a speed limit sign on speed limit, um, mighty.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be six full lights.
Mighty and six full lights.
Six full lights will be overly, it's, uh, four hundred feet apart is what I was just kinda calculating. I took measuring wheel off and walked the, the poles that are on Industrial Drive, those are four hundred feet exactly from pole to pole, so.
And cameras.
The cameras, it'd be a camera on the, the first, or on the second one, the fourth one, there'd be two cameras at each one, one point in both, of course, both directions, so it'd be four cameras total. Two point towards the middle, two point towards the other way.
Bike lane? Does it have a bicycle lane?
Never talked about that. Didn't talk about that, no, but.
I just something that is right now, that was a good throw out.
Well, it, you know, it's a private, it'd be considered a private drive, so we could put, uh, whatever speed limit we want on there or restrictions that we want, since it's a private drive. But, yeah, we have all intentions of putting something that would keep semis, buses, delivery trucks, we don't want any of that going.
Sure to passenger vehicle.
Cars and truck, yeah, just.
Pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks.
Passenger vehicle.
Passenger vehicles only.
Yes.
And as far as the traffic flow, we have no idea what that's gonna look like yet. We're gonna have to figure that out because is it something where we make it, uh, one way for fifteen minutes a day in the morning and fifteen minutes in the afternoon? We don't know yet. We're not saying that because we don't know, but.
There's a lot unknown, as I said.
We want, yeah, I mean, what we don't wanna do is put it in and still have a mess.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
I've looked at it, you know, I've seen it before, like I said, I've seen the plans for that, I've seen the plans where, you know, I got some plans for where the road was gonna cross and. It's something the wife and I talked. We knew maybe it probably inevitably was gonna happen. She's like, you know, my, obviously it's concerned of property owner, it's property daddy.
Right. I can tell you, Tony, that we, you know how we have a really nice entrance out here at our main entrance? We wouldn't have something like that out there, but we, we want it to be eye appealing. We don't want it to look like a.
Never doubted that, never, you know, that was another question, it was gonna be, you know, something just like, you know, slapped down there, thrown down there.
Right, right. I mean, we need to consider our costs, obviously, but I mean, if you look at the rest of our property and how we maintain and keep things, we're all about the way we want stuff to look appropriate. So we're not gonna just slap something in. If we can't do it right, we're not gonna do it, I can tell you that, I, I'm sure, right?
That's your motto for everything.
That's my motto for everything, right? If we can't do it right, we're not gonna do it.
Eric said we need another hundred bucks.
The estimate I, I have, I know this all has to go off a bid, but the estimate I initially got, cause I mean Keith was kinda curious to what it was gonna cost, and he had an estimate from the state also, and we're just trying to compare them, but it was for two lanes. And then it was supposed to go, go to the three lanes when it got closer towards, uh, Eighteen. So it'd be similar, almost identical to what we have now on the other end, where you have a turn lane.
Go left or right, yeah, when you're leaving.
Yep, and then one lane coming in, and you have a turn lane.
I really think we need to do some kind of study, um, traffic flow, a traffic flow study.
Hey, but another thing was, you know, we talked about with Mr. Slattery, and like Steve was very, very helpful, um, and I said, I'm not throwing him under the bus because he's not here, I'm not throwing him under the bus at all. Um, you know, the question became, you know, you guys have approached the state, I guess, about the turn lane out here, and the state shut you down and said, you know, that's not the problem. Um, my very concern is, you know, I'm hoping that we don't be the point where he's gonna be eternally in my yard, you know, coming in, you know, and I'm a.
You won.
I hope.
They wanted us to dismiss Tony Ashley from the red zone doors back here. And their reasoning for us dismissing everybody from that is so that we could store more cars on our property instead of out on the road.
Start snaking them through the, the lanes and everything else to get them off the road.
That's not gonna happen because it's not safe, number one.
It can be good.
I, I want a better view of that. I'm not gonna just dismiss my kids out where there's not, uh, appropriate vision, so that's not gonna happen.
When the state drive went in, oh, we talked to them because we were notified that there was a rumor that they wanted access to Eighteen. And so we, I'm right up, I mean, we had a meeting with them to see if they were interested because then we were kinda thinking, well, we'll give you the back to our property, and you guys put the road in, then we're just gonna have to connect from this point to the next point. And they said, we met with them and it was kinda a waste of me, and they go, we never talked about it, we have no desire to connect to Eighteen.
That's how those rumors can start.
That's exactly where I was coming here, like, just the rumors started.
And then the other one was the, the road connecting to forty, you know, industrial park, and the village talked about that, and that was kinda in their ten-year plan, but you talk to the state, they have to have manufacturing businesses wanting to go into industrial drive, creating a lot of jobs, and then economic development would help out with it. But you all, they also had to have those, those, uh, businesses saying if we had access to Eighteen, not having to drive through town, then we would really consider putting that facility in and maybe sign something saying if we did it, they would, they would come here. And they haven't had those companies come forward yet, so.
That was, that was, yeah, I was at that meeting in the city.
But you're right, that they were gonna bring that over on Burkholder's property, then we would connect.
They were actually, that road was actually supposed to go, I think, to the east side, I mean, in between, it was supposed to be between me and Kenny's, Barry's place.
The next house.
And where it was planned, as I saw, where it did even at Eighteen, the headlights were into West Sikes, front, later. And he went driving about it either. So.
What's across from, from up here now, where nothing across, where we'd be pulling out onto Eighteen?
To no, um, other than, um.
You're on the left.
I'm on the left, there is another house, um, that as they swi- if they were, as they swing into town, headlights, the headlights couldn't come across theirs, um, I believe Bassett is.
They.
Ben Day and Shelly.
Day and Shelly, yes, their home is there, um. You know, I don't know if you guys, reach out to them and, and let them know it's going right, you know, they don't have children or anything, I guess they may not know.
Like in, in the event of like a ballgame, letting out.
We, we, I understand that that's gonna be ten, twenty minutes. And we, I, you know, my wife's a stepmom, I discussed it, you know, we knew it was potentially another, um, and she's like, what do you think? I'm like, well, at most it's gonna be, you know, you're gonna see a line of traffic there after a basketball game, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, maybe.
Wouldn't even be that long, I think.
Right.
Cause it'll split and go both directions this way and that way, I think it'd be actually less.
Yeah, correct.
And, and, you know, in the mornings and the afternoons, I, I think you're looking at a five, ten minute span.
Correct.
At either end.